Your comment or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name and address if you do not desire to do so. Do we have any public comments?
My name is Don Marie Autry. I live here in Waireca. And I have two things. First of all, I want to know what the council is doing for the coronavirus and, you know, to keep it under wraps and to help, you know, contain fears and, you know, do we wipe down these, you know, after and before and all that, you know? And then the second thing is, I want to know why would you even consider putting on something in disguise of parks and recreation, the pool falls under, when people A aren't going to know what it is, honestly, because a lot of people just don't even bother read literature, come to the meetings, you know, so they won't know. And so they're going to get taxed, something that's gonna, this isn't even a drop in the bucket of what it's going to be for a pool. And, and already I have to take care of the sidewalk in front of my home. I am not willing to give money to a pool I never go to and I never will. And I don't have kids, so I think you guys need to really consider not putting this on a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robin Richland, and I live in Waireca City Valley Apartments. And we have a really bad problem on Bruce and Oregon. And I was wondering, what can I do? Can I start a petition to get a four-way stop put there? Because we're having really some pretty bad, I mean, people drug fly on Morgan Street. And I don't know if we need more stop signs along Morgan Street. I mean, they only go slow in front of Jackson Street, thank God. But what can I do to, because I know the people at the hospital will sign a petition and all that, but how do I go about that?
What's the address?
409 Bruce Street, City Valley Apartments.
Yeah, I know that there's a wreck the other day. As a matter of fact, it was one of my employees got in that accident.
Yeah, I was right behind, yeah, it came up afterwards.
It was a bad accident. He was out for a few days, so yeah, it's definitely something.
Yeah, I thought it was one of my residents' guests because it looked like the same block direction, I was like, oh, you know. But, and it's happened before where people come off of Oregon Street going on to Bruce Street, they went into that chain link fence of that home, and they never got that fixed, but I don't know what happened there. This is a really dangerous spot because there's a bus stop over there, you know, in front of this, I think where the Seeth is or, you know, and it's just too, and I know a lot of the doctors' offices and stuff would be for four-way stops right there.
Can we put that on for, so that the lieutenant or the chief or assistant chief can address that at another meeting?
We could. Probably the first thing would be is that we take these kind of requests to what I call the traffic committee, which is the public works director and police chief or their delegates. And so that would probably be the first thing. So I'm going to, with your permission, I'll give her my card. And then there's a, there's a long process involved, which you're familiar with it.
Yes.
I'm sure you're not.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Steve.
Hi, Steve. Thank you.
If you could just either give me a call or...
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go from there.
No, I want to say something.
And then there's the process involved, but we'll talk about it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, on this idea, we have to do kind of a traffic measurement to make sure that there's enough flow to require a stop sign. But it seems to be that there's been a number of accidents over the past few years, that this is probably allowable for a stop sign there, because I think it really needs it. But it has to go through public works and the Houst Department first.
Correct. As a, as a layperson myself, I don't get to make that decision. It's something where they evaluate those, those types of things.
I would be interested to see what traffic...
I'd want to see it come back.
Yeah, me too. And what kind of traffic study was done ever since Fairchild's been in there, when the last traffic study was done since then? Because I'd like to, I'd like to hear that, because it's, you know, it's been here what's since Fairchild's been, nineteen ninety, no, ninety something, and...
I'll tell you what, we'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
I might not go back that far.
Yeah, well, I just, I would like to know when the last traffic study was done on that, just to...
I, I may, I have that information, so, anyway, we'll get back to you on it.
Yeah, Lorenzo Love, I live on Fourth Street now, but I used to live about eighty feet from that intersection on Oregon and Bruce. And I've seen numerous accidents there. Most don't get reported because they're just bender benders, but I've seen many accidents, many near misses there. It's a very dangerous place, and that's not the only intersection. Minor in Oregon is a very dangerous intersection, too. It's trying to cross there, it's pedestrian, it's very hard. The buildings are so close to the road, and you can't see around the buildings. Most of the traffic control signs in this town was, was put out, I think, in the fifties, nineteen fifties. The whole town needs to be updated with more modern traffic control, better speed limits. We, we see people going insane amount of speed down some of these residential streets. We need to do something about this. I mean, how many people need to get killed before something's done?
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments about what's related to...
Well, it's kind of related to that or not, I can do either way. It's not yet enacted in the resolution, but it is about parks around.
If you, if you could, if you want to wait through that, that'd be better if you would.
Wait till later.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? All right, great, we'll move on to number one. Discussion Possible Action Consent Calendar. All matters are listed under, the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted at, by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. The city manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from February twenty first through March sixth, two thousand and twenty. B, approval of minutes of the special meeting held February thirteenth and the regular meeting held February twentieth, two thousand and twenty. C, resolution extending the suspension of section thirteen point seven six point zero one zero of the Waireca municipal code allowing installation of banners on Fairland Road. And D, acceptance of the treasurer's report and budget to actual for the month of January two thousand and twenty. What is the council's...
So I move.
So we have a first and a second on that. Any opposed? Motion carried then.
Aye.
Okay, two, discussion possible action, summer two thousand and twenty, Waireca Swim and Activity Program. One, approval of the summer two thousand and twenty Waireca Swim and Activity Program at the Montague Community Park and Pool for Waireca youth. And two, approval of the supplemental appropriation of eight thousand to be allocated between FY nineteen and twenty and FY two thousand and twenty-one. We have you or who's on this one?
Did you want to do it or you want me to go ahead?
Do you want to be Joan tonight?
Well, I, I think it's something that needs to be, yeah, I mean, we did it last year. I think it's a small amount to pay right now while we don't have a pool.
Right.
To be able to have, to have a, an outlet, you know, for, for our kids, for the kids to be able to swim and, you know, anybody that might want to use it. It seemed to be used well last year, and the, the Y was very cooperative with us, so...
Yeah, for the audience, this is a collaboration with the YMCA, the Montague, and Stage, and the city of Waireca, so it's, it's a, well, well, particip, a lot of participants last year more than we expected, and the Y was, is excited about running the program again this year for escorting the kids there and back, and, and the youth supervisor there for those activities, so very exciting, and I know something, yeah.
Until we have a pool, it's a small price to pay.
I don't, I mean, as myself, I didn't hear any negative things about that level thing that went on, so last year was a real positive. The year before, there were some issues, and we worked out all those issues.
Last year, people were positive about it.
So I know that the mayor would have liked to have been here tonight to talk about this.
Yes, and we're glad she's not.
And the other thing that I wanted to mention, it has not happened yet, but there is an effort to move the, a bus stop up near the Y, so it will be easier to transport the, the kids with the Y supervision and get them back in a safe place when they get back. So that is something that's supposed to be coming up on the, the transportation, the stage, based on the bus system, although I don't have today exactly when that will happen, but I do know that that's where it is. And we did, we, we all agree, it was a very successful program, and we are recommending that you continue to do it.
And if I can add something, please? Yes. There were just under eighty children as participants in this program, so by all means, that was a success, to the point where the Y is considering putting a second staff member on to help supervise, which is very cool. And also, one of the main reasons, not only for convenience for the parents, but safety for the children, as to why they want to drop off and pick up at the Y, is that they can use the Y as a safe place if parents are laid or that kind of thing, so... Joan, Mayor Freeman actually got it all together and has provided a really good program here with the support of everybody.
Yeah, I agree.
Steve, when we're talking, we're talking about the county switching where they stop the stage.
Correct.
Now, like schools, does that have to go through the California Highway Patrol? You know, bus stops have to be approved by California Highway Patrol.
I'm not sure what the process is from the, for, for the stage in terms of that. I do know it needs to go through the local transportation commission.
I don't think the local transportation commission already approved.
I, I know that they've, I, I know that they've talked about it.
Some of them were talking about it, I thought it got approved.
At, at this point, I'm not sure that it's, it's been approved, but I know it's something they've been talking about, and it's something that, since she's, I believe, the chairperson of that, that I, I know that she is working very hard. I just don't have the, the knowledge of exactly what's going on. There's been some changes over with the LTC in terms of whose management, they have an outside consultant who's recently started, and so sometimes there's a little less information than there has been in the past and then that there will be in the future.
Can, can I ask just to get, it looked like lieutenant, the lieutenant might have had something just to say.
I know that Chief Washington Matt Ray didn't talk about this, and they went out and looked at the location, and we were not opposed to having that there, so I'm not sure where it's at as of yet, but I know that Chief and Matt have talked and went out and looked at the site.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Any other questions for the council? Is there a motion in place?
I'll make the motion, then we approve the summer two thousand and twenty Waireca Swim and Activity Program at the Montague Community Park and Pool for Waireca youth, and approve the supplemental appropriation of eight thousand dollars to be allocated between fiscal year nineteen and twenty and fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carried then. All right. Next, we have the number three, discussion possible action, authorize the city manager to execute a letter to LAFCO, LAFCO, indicating the city intends to place the resolution initiating proceedings for the formation of a Recreation and Parks District, Waireca Recreation and Parks District, and hold a public hearing.
I will recuse myself at this time. Conflict of interest.
All right, do you want to start this off?
Yes, council members, the, as you're aware, we've been working with a group of Waireca citizens seeking funding for the capital costs and the operating costs of the Ringy Pool. We applied to the state to receive funds, and by the way, Robin Richards will be up here in a minute to ask, answer any questions you may have. But the city, with the help of that group, who I can get right now, call the proponents, there may be a name that they eventually come up with, but submitted that application. It was unsuccessful. We did talk to the state earlier this week, actually, to try to find out where the grant could be improved, and the areas where we did not get maximum points were on things that were demographically, like Park acreage and median income and number of people in poverty, and another factor that I'm forgetting right now. But we got max points on all the things where you can write about in the grant application. So we actually did very well. Unfortunately, the state has a practice of not telling you how many points you didn't get and where you are in the standings, so they, they just wouldn't tell us that at all. However, at the same time, we're also looking at the ongoing revenues for the operation of the pool, because it is expensive to operate, and we want to make sure that if we do receive funding for a new pool, that it is continued to be maintained during, frankly, our lifetimes and our children's lifetimes. So the proponents are looking to initiate an action with the Local Agency Formation Commission, which is what LAFCO stands for. There will be a test. And the area that they're looking at is the, within the city, within the city limits, and basically one voting district outside of that, most around, so kind of a greater area. This tonight, there's a, a process that you have to go through from the city end, and a process that goes through from the LAFCO end, and then also there's another process that trails this about putting the, a measure on the ballot, which is part of this whole proposal after the formation of the district. This step tonight is only to start that process with LAFCO. In other words, what we're asking you to do is to authorize sending a letter, it needs to come from the legislative body, I will sign it on your behalf, that indicates that we're going to be holding a public hearing April second. Between now and then, we'll also have another presentation on this on March nineteenth, I believe. So, so I just want to mention that this is just the first action to get it going. We would be happy to answer questions and so on, but you will see this two more times before it goes to LAFCO. And then, once it gets to LAFCO, they do their thing, which also involves some hearings and notifications as well, as well as some studies, although there may not be a lot of need for studies in this particular case, but until it gets to them, they can't really definitively tell us exactly what that's going to be. So I did want to mention that we have outlined some potential costs, and you'll notice that there's some to be determined on there. And if the district is formed, those costs can be charged to the district in its first full year of operation, which is like two years from now, say sometime in two thousand and twenty-two. If it, if the tax measure doesn't happen, then we, as the sponsor of this resolution, should it pass on April second, would be responsible for these costs. And again, we're expecting some of them to be modest, even if it doesn't say the number in there, but we, we don't know exactly what those are.
So this whole expense total, this, I'm reading, four hundred and two thousand seven sixty-five, is that what I'm reading, or is I, I'm jumping?
Wow, I don't know where I found four hundred and two sixty-five. Oh, you're talking about the, the budget, yes. That is part of what we're sending to them as a proposed budget. Now, this budget is premised on the pool being and, and the, the rest of Ringy Park being, is what, that's what this estimate is based on.
Is that estimate based on, on the pool itself, is that an eight-month usage, or that's an eight-month usage?
You want to go ahead and come on up to the podium?
Hi, Robin Richards from Waireca. So yes, the budget in there is still in flux, because obviously, if, some of the money was in there for the pool, some for other projects, and I'll explain a little bit about where that is. We really won't have any expenditures in the district until a pool is built in terms of lifeguards and swim instructors. So what our group, I'm representing the citizens for the Waireca Recreation and Parks District is kind of our name, yes, what a name was.
Yes, thank you.
And there's a group of us, there's probably, varies from twenty-five to forty people that have been kind of meeting on this. We will have another meeting on March sixteenth, so it's just before your council meeting, and it will be in Monday, March sixteenth, at six P M. at the YMCA, and they're conference from there. So what, what this is, is this is a requirement by the Recreation and Parks Regulations. The state of California has LAFCO regulations and Recreation and Park Regulations. If you want to form a Recreation and Parks District, they require a twenty-one day notice to LAFCO from you guys that says that you're planning to do it, and then you review the resolution, and then you adopt a resolution, which, as Steve mentioned, would be April second. So we're kind of midway through the development process. And I should say, we had a long discussion at our last meeting, which I think was like the twenty-fifth of February, so it was a week or so ago, about kind of the kinds of things that we want to do. And so I think there's been a perception that it's just the pool, and it's not. Many of us are there for non-pool activities, actually, me and others, but, but they're certainly there, a lot of people want the pool, but I think there's also a need in our community for recreational programming and coordination of some of the volunteer groups. That was one of the things that was brought up really strongly, about having some focus point on recreational activities and then working on the use of parks. And so it's much broader than just the pool. I think that's, perception has been out there, probably because it was why we kind of started this, down this route, and it really is much broader. And it's much broader because the citizens on our group have said, we want it much broader. We don't want to just be a narrow focus, so, and I appreciated your, your comments, Don Marie, about that, because I think that's one of the things that we need to just sort of get out there, that we're really trying to work on, a way to make this community much more lively and exciting and having activities going on, instead of having all these kind of disparate groups, we kind of help coordinate them and, and assist them in their activities. And that includes soccer, Little League softball, mountain biking was represented, the community gardens, the trail people. So there's a whole broad range of people that are doing things that we're interested in. So anyway, that was my little comment. Do you have questions or...
Questions, no?
Not this time.
Thank you for the hard work, that's all I can say, it's been awesome.
Well, it's been a labor of love, right, guys?
Yes.
We bought it, because we, I really, there's a lot of community support for this, in terms of people wanting to have this kind of activity going on. So anyway, we did it that.
Thank you, Rob. Anything else, also wants to talk about? You want to make a motion on this?
I will make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a letter to LAFCO indicating that the city intends to place a resolution initiating proceedings for the formation of a Recreation and Parks District, Waireca Recreation and Park District, and hold a public hearing.
I'm not ready to make a second, but I, I can't vote for something when we have half of the costs, say, to be determined. And there is no definite cost of, at least have some idea of range, ten thousand, twenty thousand, I mean, there's just like to be determined on all these costs. So I mean, the problem I have, it, since we didn't get the pool grant, I think chances of this passing are almost zero. You have to get two-thirds vote, and you're trying to get a lot of people outside the city limits, and I just don't believe that people are going to pass that. And I mean, I think it'd be very lucky if it gets fifty percent. So my view is, I think the city should have a sales tax election, and that we combine building the pool and building a new fire station. We have two major projects that need to be addressed recently, I mean, very soon, because our fire station could fall down. It's way too old, and we need a pool. And the only way we're going to be able to finance it is have enough money. The, the amount of money that's suggested here is basically enough money to run the pool. There's really not enough money to do all these other programs. I mean, it's good if it passes, and I think I would support putting it on the ballot, because I believe the citizens should have a right to choose whether they want to tax themselves or not. But I'd just like to see how much it's going to cost us to begin with.
So in, in, in response to that, at your next meeting, I am hoping to have those to be determined a lot lower, or, you know, that I'll have a range for them. We did have some ranges in our, in our original estimates, that, but they were pretty broad ranges, and so I sort of wanted to tie them down a little bit more than that. The LAFCO feasibility study, what we're hearing is it may not be very much. So I will get you that information before the next meeting, should you decide that you want to go forward with at least letting LAFCO know that we're talking about this. Because I understand that you, that you need to have the fiscal information, that's why we started to put it into this report. But as you know, there's some of these things, we don't actually have them tied down, and some of them will be, but we can give up the ranges by the next meeting.
I think you're going, I think you're going to find a range of between three hundred and five hundred thousand dollars, and again, you're, you're not going to know it's...
No, that's different, that's, I want to know what the cost of, is to put it on the ballot, because I think it's a very iffy chance to get two-thirds of a vote. So I mean, we're going to be spending money for something that may not ever happen, that's what I want to see, what is our cost?
Right.
And I, I can't support it till we get those costs.
So I'm understanding, though, this is just the first stage, so if we agree on tonight, we could still, the next meeting could go the other way. So if it gets agreed upon tonight, though, it's not a for sure, for sure thing anyway, so we could actually...
Oh, no, not at, not at all. This is just a...
So that's the other thing, Norm, is we look at that viewpoint, that it's next meeting is when we're going to finalize more of this stuff, so. And this, this is just getting the ball rolling in that aspect.
This is not spending the money.
No, it's not spending the money, absolutely.
This is just saying we can, yeah.
That's right. I just want to state that, that's this, we're not spending money right now, but this gets the first step in motion to where a vital step, if we are going to take it to the next level, so.
Well, I'm still of the opinion, I think, if sales tax increase and be fifty percent as opposed to two-thirds vote, and bring in people from outside the city limits, I think it's going to be very difficult to get the two-thirds, so.
The, the, a sales tax that it does not have a specific purpose would only...
Right, well, that's the idea, that we say the money's going to go to rebuilding the firehouse and rebuilding the pool.
If, if we actually specify that, though...
If they specify, it has to go to you.
How much money is the sales tax going to bring in?
I, well...
What did a quarter percent bring in?
Well, I'm...
Half a percent.
We, we did a half a percent.
About nine hundred thousand.
Correct.
In a year?
Right.
Yeah.
So if you're building a four and a half million dollar, let's say, conservatively, fire station, and let's say you can build conservatively for five and a half million, we're only waiting ten years, eleven years, before we, we can build one of them in four to five years, and one of them, I mean, I'm not a sales tax guy, because I can tell...
The whole idea is that we would get enough money to put the down payment down, and we'd get loans that we could pay off with the sales tax.
You'd have enough to debt service.
Right. That's provided.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to save the money up until ten years or more.
I'm going to play devil's advocate on, on this, because I will tell you that I don't think a sales tax will go, and I'm going to tell you why. Because I owned Sears for seven years, and as soon as the sales tax passed, I lost, I can, I can show you my books and show you how many more tens of thousands of dollars did not come to my store and went up to Medford.
Yep.
And, and that's just, I'm just saying.
Well, from another aspect, too.
And Steve knows, I've complained to him when I wasn't a, when I wasn't on council or even on the planning commission.
That's other things to look at, especially gets us over the next level as far as percentage wise, if you're looking at what we are now, the percentage on sales tax, and you start going to the next level, and it's, now you're looking at stuff that's going on down Bay Area and stuff.
Well, then, yeah, the other thing is, on a sales tax, you got to have a sunshine, so how long do you let it go, five, four years, five years, six years?
I guess on this, we need to, then we need to get back to this particular topic.
Yeah.
That's a future topic, right? This is a topic we need to discuss tonight. This is a topic we need to discuss tonight, which is.
I have the motion still on the table, just so you know.
Motion's still on the table and Steve's gonna come back with a more definite cost analysis at the next meeting in two weeks.
Yeah.
I will make a, a second on the motion.
Okay, without, yeah, okay.
Okay, so we do have a second now. First?
No, 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 I have a first. He's not, did you second it?
Yeah, he did second.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
So, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried on that one.
Thank you, Norm.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All righty, now we're off to city manager and staff.
Hang on, we need to get our councilman.
Oh.
Council person, I'm sorry.
I was gonna sit down for food.
You better bring it up for all of us.
Well, you've got, there's a lot of them out here, so, yeah.
Sorry. Leave it back there.
That's okay.
All right, city staff, towards?
I'll see if any of the other staff members that are here this evening want to add to this. The only thing I wanted to address is earlier, there was a, a comment on the coronavirus that I know has, has a, a different name. So, some of the things that we are doing, we are making sure that things are, are cleaned as much as possible. We've got a what do they call it? Hand sanitizer at the, at the front counter and back in some of our other areas. And beyond that, we're just, we also have this, the commu- CDC, whatever that stands for.
Center for Disease Control.
Thank you. I was thinking the committee for something, but anyway, the Center for Disease Control, we have some information from them. We're starting to get more information from places like our insurance company and that sort of, with some suggestions. Should it reach epidemic proportions, we would work with the county health department. And they have, they train for this. This is their specialty.
Well, I know firsthand who's in charge of that, public health or the Dr. Kupakoff, because my wife's involved with that.
Okay.
So, I know he's on top of that.
So, we're, we're gonna be listening to your wife? And so, so that's kind of how it works. Our, right now, what we're trying to do is to make sure that we're looking at you know, our, our employees, if they, you know, suddenly, right now, there hasn't been a case in the county. Who knows whether that will change or not? I certainly don't know. But we will be working closely with, with the health folks if and when that, that does occur. And, you know, basically, don't touch your face.
Yeah.
Hard for me.
That includes behind your ears, women? Do not put your, do not put your hair behind your ears.
All right.
And part of the reason is when they take your samples, they go, they go both nostrils and then they go down the throat, but they don't want you, all the, those three orifices, but, but women are encouraged not to put, by doctors, do not put your hair behind your ears. Don't touch your.
Right, and wash your hands a lot.
Men, men. You gotta put a pony, man.
Just as a comment, the normal flu that we get every year, the death rate is one tenth of one percent. The death rate from this virus is three plus percent. And it's the same as the death rate from the Spanish flu in nineteen eighteen. Thirty times higher than the normal flu, the death rate. So, this is very, very serious.
So, we will be looking at that.
Anybody else? Who else? Lieutenant? Nothing? Oh, man.
I thought there was a Lone Ranger on this, so. Anyway.
Well, do you want to start us off, Paul?
I know, I just want to say that Steve and I met two days ago regarding no- novel COVID-19 and talked about, you know, things that, and I know that you had met with the mayor also and you guys might have met. So, I appreciate you doing that so that we can kind of get that. And the big thing stressing is washing your hands and not touching your face.
Right.
You know, same thing you do when you are, and sneezing into your arm. And masks do not work. If you have the flu, it's okay to wear a mask. But if you don't have anything, wearing a mask does not protect you. And it actually takes away from what doctors and nurses and them need in the, they need in a professional hospital. So, but I think that's, no, I appreciate that, you know, you're doing that. I want to thank Kevin and whoever reran the wire because now I'm not kicking it and because I have a tendency to move around, so I want to.
Excellent, I will pass that along.
Yeah, I want to, I want to thank you for all that. And then I do want to thank Lieutenant for meeting with me in regards to something on Minor Street and Steve, you met with me also, so. I appreciate that.
Is that it?
Yep, sir.
Okay, I went to the Waireca Fire Safety Council Meeting. And there's a number of projects, I've got a map of all the areas nearby Waireca and there's some projects that are gonna happen this summer. But I'm hoping that the new fire chief can work on getting us some grants to do some more fuel reduction in city areas. And also that we work with the code enforcement officer on larger parcels on the periphery of the city to make sure that there's at least a forty-foot fire break. So, those are two key things that we need to get more grants to do fire safety in the city with the fire department. And then the code enforcement officer needs to specifically enforce because I think we're gonna have a very bad fire season with what little precipitation we've had this.
Pretty scary. We're down seven, seven and a half inches of rainfall. We're down from our average.
Well, the snow survey that we just got from the Climate National Forest, we're forty percent abnormal.
And Waireca's precipitates below seventy, seven and a half inches below the average. They just had that on TV this morning, so, yeah, it's kind of scary.
Coming from Reno on Sunday morning, I'd have been four-wheel drive for forty-five miles on, on three ninety-five, yeah. In order, yeah, because they got so much snow there and it's scary.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, we are, and Southern California's having a rough time.
I was gonna ask you, one of us, they know, are they gonna do any of those chipper programs and all? Have you heard?
Uh, nothing's planned on that right now, yeah. But something would be nice to have.
Yeah, I'm actually down.
I got a pile up by my house, that's why.
Thank you. Debbie?
Uh, just a little bit of information regarding the newsletter from the city. This month in your water bill was pretty informative about building codes. There you go. There'll be a test next time, so please read it.
Do we have to know what LAFCO stands for?
Do I know what it stands for?
No, I'm, yes.
Oh, yes.
She had recused herself and left.
Oh, yeah, right. And Saturday night is the firefighter, firefighter of the year fundraising banquet dinner. And I hope to see some of you there, please. And that's it.
There was, Dwayne, there was one thing that was on Facebook that Jerry put on there, Lemus? To go vote for a, for, against, it's our, it's our, our firefighters against some in Sacramento. And it's for a thousand bucks, so if you get a chance to go on.
Yes.
Yeah, vote, vote, vote.
I did.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
No, that's good. It's good to add to that. I want to add to what you just said on the newsletter and it's very good, the newsletter. It actually has how big a shed you can actually have without a permit. A hundred twenty square feet, I don't know how many people know that, but a hundred twenty square feet. It also says installing siding, if you need a permit, those little covered carports that you see all over the area, especially in the county area, you see a lot of those covered carports. A lot of those aren't up to code, just so people know. Because they don't have a forty, forty-pound snow load capacity on those. That's one thing that, that's addressed in here too. And windows and roofing and stuff like that. So, it was very, very informative on questions and answers on our newsletter. It was really good that, that stayed in there. So, a lot of people ask me those questions on a regular basis, especially the carports and the sheds. We get a lot of that on the sheds, so. That's good. I'm glad we have that in there. Thank you. Also add on here, we had our number for the homeless count that came out too. Let me bring that up here real quick.
And this is kind of like a, this is a firm, pretty firm?
This is a pretty firm, yes. This is what it will be if I can bring it up here. I should have brought it up first. All right, here we go. So, we had, finally, the numbers are dialed in on that. We had, I'll just go on the Waireca part of it because I'm sure a lot of people aren't really into the everyplace else part of it. Waireca, we had unsheltered. We had, ended up having ninety-three unsheltered people, yeah. Now, sheltered, we ended up having thirty-eight. So, there was quite a significant number. We ended up with a total three hundred twenty-five homeless, homeless identified this, on this count that we did, which is twenty-four percent. Excuse me, it's a twenty percent from last year and then forty-four percent from twenty eighteen, so.
It's a big jump.
The numbers are going up and a lot of it has to do with the way we counted. We're able to count and we, I, we're able to identify a lot more. And a lot of it was just the, the population has, and that's, that's statewide. There's a lot more. I don't have the numbers, exact numbers statewide yet. But I'll, I'm sure I'll be getting those soon too. But it's, it's, it's getting a lot more prevalent no matter where you go right now. All we can say is it was a lot of people that have their hands in this and are trying to tackle this issue. One of the things I'm bringing up at our next homeless meeting, homelessness night meeting, which is on March twenty-third at Behavioral Health, is we're gonna talk about, again, doing a point in time count in July.
Yeah.
And I think we're probably gonna end up doing it. And the, a lot of reasons why I want to do this, the main reason is I want to be able to show the federal government and the state that, how our area's impacted during the summer months. How it's greatly impacted by law enforcement, how much it's impacted by our fire department on, on emergency calls that they're impacted. So, I think if we can start showing some of these numbers to the state and the federal level, that hopefully we can get some recognition and maybe get some assistance to the county or however we can get some assistance. It's just one step and it's a lot of work to do. And I know a lot of people are like, you're crazy to try to do it, especially in the summer months. But I think there's, it has a huge impact on our community, a huge impact. And it costs a lot of money for our community. All the resources get really zapped big time. Do you have something you want to add?
Just asking a question about the numbers. You have ninety-three unsheltered, thirty-eight sheltered, and then you have three hundred and twenty-five homeless?
That's, that's a county.
Countywide.
That's countywide, yes.
Okay, so everybody else throws their own counts?
Correct. Yes, we have, you know, Dunn's, Mayor, Happy Camp, Warren Brook, McLeod.
So, our numbers are just Waireca?
Correct. The ninety-three and thirty-eight was just Waireca. So, that's, that gives you a good idea. You know, the county also is involved in this. They, Behavioral Health actually makes phone calls and does, does help us out quite a bit on this count too. So, some of those numbers are through them too, which helps us tremendously to get those numbers. And I know a lot of people think it's, okay, this is weird, you're getting numbers. You know, we really don't want to know how many homeless people we have in, in Waireca or Siskiyou County. But the fact of the matter is, if we don't count these, then the state doesn't know and then we don't get any funding for this. So, it's huge that we, we have these numbers available. Three years ago, we didn't have these numbers available. We got nothing. So, by doing this, we've got a considerable amount of money the last couple of years just because of that. And, and the number will increase now because of that, so.
What do you do with the money?
What's that?
What do you do with the money?
Right now, that sugar money was mainly going to Behavioral Health for try to, um, workers and stuff like that to try to get one-on-one workers of the situation. It's kind of hard. It gets distributed out of different, few different ways. And I have the numbers I, I can get to you if you want on where it gets distributed out, so I'll bring those to you.
Has even one person been taken off the streets?
Has there been?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there actually has been a couple of them. I don't have any specific names, but I do, I do know the Beacon of Hope has had at least a couple, three that they've, they've stated that they've gotten off the streets.
I know, I know one and I, I won't mention names, but I know one because I had the kid in fifth grade and the kid that was homeless, his little brother, when it was baby.
Right, so there is, there is definitely some impact that's being made, a positive impact that's being made. It's just slow. And it's, till we get the right, till we get the right resources, it is gonna be a slow process. Okay, and then on to, went to the citizen of the year. I know that Debbie was there. Steve was there. It was, it was really well, I, it was great. I liked it. It was enjoyable, the citizen. We had, what, what do we end up with? Three, we had citizen of the year, which was Lisa Nixon. We had the nonprofit, which was Waireca Little League. And the business was?
Bellard.
Bellard, thank you. So, it was really, it was neat to see the crowd. There was a good crowd, real good crowd. And let's see, let's, what else do I have? Oh, I just have for a future question, if we can bring a couple, a couple of things and bring up on the future. Since Matt's not here, we obviously, I don't want to ask any questions, but next time, what's going on with the park host situation? So, I'd like that brought up in public.
At a future meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And then, one thing I brought up a long time ago is the baseline for home improvement for capital gain, for, for sidewalks and improvements and stuff like that. I'd like to hear.
From twenty to thirty?
Yeah, correct, from twenty, thirty thousand dollars on the baseline of that. So, I'd like to hear on the future on that, what's going on there. I know it's been a while and I know, I know our attorney's been busy, but I just still like to find enough, have an update on that.
We can get back to that.
And then, what Norm was saying earlier, I would like to present something, not this next city council meeting, but the one after that on something on the fire hall. I would like to make a presentation on that of an idea that I think all of us would like to hear, so. Not this next city council meeting, but the following one.
I mean, not the planning meeting, but the.
Correct. And that's all I have, so.
Dwayne, thanks for buying the gift cards for the homeless. I know you put out your own money. Thank you. Because they like that.
It definitely makes encouragement for get their questions answered, I should say.
And I only had one guy ask me, one person asked me where Subway was. The rest of them knew there was one on my, oh, no, I, I know where it is. Thank you.